Okay, this is the March ninth, 2023. Meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. I'm Stephen O'Donnell, the Chair. We have David Mills, Rick Grant, and Ray Simon here as members. So we do have a quorum. Don't see any other members on Zoom. First. Item on the agenda is our February minutes. Do we have any motion to? Approve those minutes? You weren't here, Dave. Were you here, Rick?
No.
All right. We'll have to pass the minutes because we don't have. Necessary quorum to review the minutes of that. Meeting which included the. Public hearing. On the proposed solar project, which is. The next item on the agenda, old business. So Paula, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Suzanne's actually going to take the lead for assisting.
Suzanne, what's your last name? I'm sorry.
Rose.
You were here at the last meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So hi for everyone who was here. I'm Suzanne Rose from Novel Energy. We are here to discuss the Monmouth Acorn First Project, 975 kilowatt AC project. And we've been before the board a few times already, and we just want to address some concerns that came up at our last hearing. So we had talked about the sheep grazing, questions on that. Information we received is when a site's being established, particularly one where we can't use any herbicides or pesticides due to the proximity of the organic farm next door. We would likely mow three to four times per summer for years one and two. Years three through five should be two to three times per year, and after year five, it would be one time per year. The cost for mowing is around $1,300 per time. And the sheep grazing would be $400 per acre or $3,200 per time. We couldn't really use the sheep until about year five because we wouldn't have the correct vegetation for them, and it would only need to be grazed about one time per year. So we were concerned. I know with the watershed about the phosphorus and there would be no noxious weeds. There's a concern about the sheep eliminating the pollinators that we plant outside the array also. We spoke with Heidi, and we would be happy to do a contract with her after the five years. She is the neighbor, the name we got from Andy Smith. Next issue is the Access Authority. We spoke with them. He had reviewed our application. He said there was no issues, and he would issue that to us once we received planning approval. And the third concern, we are requesting that if we received an additional use permit, that it be valid for two years to the start of construction as opposed to the one year. It won't typically take us that long, but we didn't want to be tied to the one year because we have a two-year requirement to meet mechanical completion and the utility, but we have a 52-week lead time with the equipment because of supply chain issues.
I think our ordinance requires that after a year, if you haven't been able to start construction, you just request that additional year.
Okay, is that, do we have to come back before the?
Well, I think you just send a letter.
Okay.
You send a letter saying, you know, we haven't, because of supply chain or other issues, we haven't been able to start construction. We request that the approval be continued for a year before the start of construction.
Okay.
It's come up on other projects, and it's generally. I mean, I don't know that there would be something that. I don't, I don't think, you know, we haven't had any issues come up. I think that's one of the members trying to. Call in, and I don't know why she. Just excuse me one moment.
I think it's bonding.
Yeah, your construction permit would expire after a year.
Yeah, building permits.
Be able to get extension on that as well.
For nominal, like $25. Just so you know, there is only a year.
Yeah, now we're on, and Doug has been able to get on, so I'm not quite sure what you issued. So what, what I would do is I'd close. Close it out. Go back in, you know, go to the town of Mon, go to our agenda and go to the agenda page and then try again.
Just click on it.
All right, yep. Very sorry for that. Technology.
Of it when it works.
Yeah. So is that? Yeah. Question. I mean, you're, you're gonna clear the site. Or, well, you're basically got a existing field. What, what do you think you're gonna have to do as far as? Getting the site ready for construction? Is there going to be the need to remove the existing vegetation or just cut it? You know, until you get on.
Yeah, so basically what happens is, you know, bringing out the, so there'll be a little bit of grading where the equipment pad and the access road goes. Other than that, there's not really grading. What happens is when you bring up, bring out like the pile drivers, every, you know, all the other equipment, it pretty much destroys the vegetation, unfortunately. What we are required to do through the state domain construction permitting and through the national pollutant discharge elimination system permitting, we are required to plant temporary if we're going to be out of that area for 14 days. And if it's beyond that, I mean, then we would basically put in the permanent. It's kind of how it goes. So we'll put, we have to put in new vegetation, and there's plant mixes underneath the array. It would just be a low-growing native, and then on the perimeter, it would be a pollinator blend.
Yeah, and that's, you use the word native, which makes a lot of sense to have something that is consistent with this environment, right?
For sure.
The decommissioning bond. Did you have a figure you were recommending in your, I didn't open your application.
Yes.
And I know there's maybe some kind of inflation. Factor that you've calculated.
So, Paula Chase.
No, it's okay. I meant to try to get in there earlier before we got here and one thing another. I can try to get into my.
I know, I know if.
Get to the right.
All right, the decommissioning. We have already received conditional approval with MDEP. And the amount. Of the plan is $61,946.74. And that includes 2.5% inflation rate per year. So the initial for the actual decommissioning was $34,248.83. And then add in the 2.5% inflation for the 25 years comes to 61,946.74. Again, MDEP has provided conditional approval on that. So then, as soon as we submit the financial surety to either the town or MDEP, whichever you would prefer, then we would obtain the final approval.
It seemed a low figure, 61, based on the other project we had, but. We looked at a very big, bigger, much bigger number on that, but.
What was the size of that one?
That might be the size, might be a size.
That's right. We've got them all over the board, pretty much anything from like, I think, 132 kilowatts AC would be our smallest up to like the five megawatts AC, and like the five megawatts, we're looking at about 181,000 average.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's the reason for that discrepancy, just because they don't have to remove all the piles, all the racking, all the.
It's just the panels.
Well, I mean, it would all have to be removed, but, but it's just a lesser number with the much smaller system.
Okay. And I think some email came through from Dan Dutton, the Public Works, which basically said, as soon as you get approval from the planning board, he feels he could issue the permit.
Suzanne actually already submitted that.
Yeah, so we're on track with that. I, there was some sort of request last meeting. We reached out to the police department to see if they had any particular concerns, and they, and I didn't get her any kind of response.
I, I talked to him. There's nothing.
Yeah. I think the concern may be for some signage during actual construction. So that motorists on that road are aware that maybe, you know, a lot of truck traffic at certain times and.
I think that was Dan's request.
Yep. Okay, any board members have any additional questions?
Yes, I have one. Did I understand you correctly to say, as you go from year to year, maintenance-wise, that you're gonna do one cutting? Five years down the road or something along that line?
Years, we would mow three to four times per summer through years one and two. Years three to five would be two to three times, and after year five would be one time.
And the reason for that is then the vegetation is established exactly like it's supposed to be. You know, any noxious weeds that may have been started or anything like that has been eradicated. Everything's been squared away. Everything is growing as it's supposed to be. But the first couple of years are always a little more difficult, first few years, just because if the noxious weeds tend to pop up or any other thing, and we want to make sure that there's no issues, particularly on this site with the use of no herbicides or pesticides, that makes it even a little bit more labor-intensive and, and difficult to make sure we handle it appropriately. I know that the watershed district was concerned about the sheep because of the phosphorus and the feces, et cetera. So again, if we are down to that one time a year at the year-five mark with the appropriate vegetation, that would alleviate the concerns there, whereas I think in the first few years, it would probably add to kind of some of the issues that he had with that phosphorus.
Typically, on, on certain developments, I thought the DEP recommendation was two, no more than two.
They only regulate sites that are over 20 acres.
Yeah.
I actually spoke to Jim Byers with, with MDEP about that in particular because I wanted to reach out to him after, after the discussion at the last meeting, just to kind of get a feel for what, what they were getting at. And again, as soon as we have the proper vegetation, it'll only be once a year. But you have to establish that, and, and that's kind of there. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience here for this matter that has question or comment at this point? Think we could, you know, this has been. If we started this in December, they're very patient with us. But, you know, these projects can have a lot of public interest.
Appreciate it.
So I'd entertain a motion. To go through the review of this project. Remove. A second. Right. So looking at this. Just going through what's, what's occurred that started in December. If we had a site visit, formal site visit on January 7th. And I know some members of the board attended that, and some went at other time to, to look at it. We were we were concerned about snow kind of interfering with our ability to see things. We gave notice to the abotters. And we had a public hearing last month that, well, might have had a dozen residents show up for that, made a presentation and comments. So I think there's been good notice to the townspeople. So looking at the review criteria. I'll go through these, and do we have a motion that the applicant has identified all freshwater wetlands regardless of size?
If the applicant has.
There are second.
Second.
Okay, and I think you had to make some adjustments because there were wetlands close to the south Monmouth Road. Any? Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor that it will, has identified, which unanimous? A motion that will the project have an undue adverse effect on any identified scenic resources, historical sites, significant wildlife habitat, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights for physical or visual access, shoreline?
I move it will not.
Any discussion on that motion? Not all in favor? Has the applicant identified any stream or brook within or abutting the development? Should have done that next. Second? Any discussion, all in favor? Unanimous? So I don't think this one, okay. Will there be no exterior lighting signs or outdoor advertising that will detract from the layout of the property, surrounding properties, and will not constitute hazards? I think the motion would be will not.
Could not.
Any discussion on that? There's really no exterior lighting planned. All in favor of that motion that it will not? unanimous? Will the project cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition would result?
I move the vote not.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? We have this one standard. Will, will or will not the project provide for the preservation of landscape in its natural state? This is a, always a tricky one because it does in some ways, there's not, you're not using all the land. But it obviously is going to change the the perspective. So I guess the motion will, will be, it will not completely. That motion? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Adequate sewage disposal is not applicable? Will the project adversely impact the quality of surface water or its shoreline?
Will not.
Second? Any discussion? Favor? Will the project adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater?
I move the vote not.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Water supply not applicable? Will the project provide for adequate stormwater management? Any discussion on that? All in favor? Unanimous? Will the project provide for adequate disposal of solid waste and hazardous waste? Hazardous waste, I think, would be the panels at the time of decommission.
Correct.
So. Proposal for a bond, I guess. Do we have a motion on that?
Yes.
Yes. All in favor? Does the project provide for safe and convenient access in adequate traffic conditions?
I move that yes.
Any discussion? That's what we talked about, the traffic controls or during construction. So all in favor? Unanimous? Will this project exceed the capacities of various public facilities? Down. Any discussion? All in favor? Does the project satisfy our phosphorus review policies and export standards?
Steve O'Donnell?
Joe's.
I was gonna say.
You did close. John, are you on? Can you hear us? Sounded like John.
Can you repeat that one?
Yes. Will the project satisfy our phosphorus review policies and export, phosphorus export standards?
I move it will.
All in favor? And I did speak again with Bill Monagle just this week, just to confirm. Did, I think at the last meetings, the phosphorus calculations and he felt that they were satisfied. He did bring up the point we had talked about. If the road was moved, it might actually create more impervious. But as it's planned, he thinks we're fine, so. Has the applicant demonstrated adequate financial and technical capacity to meet our criteria and complete the development?
I move to have.
Any discussion? All in favor? And with any appropriate conditions we impose? Will the project conform with our duly adopted local regulations, ordinances, and comprehensive plan?
I move it will.
So I think we, we had one other solar project that we have approved. And what I did is I took some of those just for, so we can discuss what might be what we want to see for appropriate conditions. Have you got all the necessary DEP approval?
We do. We just, like I said, need the final decommissioning, but we've got the conditional approval, and we've got the stormwater PBR. General.
Yes. The last project we had hadn't, they were still before DEP.
We learned our lesson on that one. We tried in that, so we have those approvals because it helps everybody.
So some conditions to discuss, perhaps, provide proof of Maine Department of Environmental Protection Site Development approval prior to start of construction. Live where and receive a building permit from the Monmouth Co-Enforcement Officer and a road permit, road opening permit from the Public Works Director prior to the start of construction. Provide a performance bond amount of with annual inflation increase of two and a half percent?
That's, that's, that's in there.
Okay.
At year 25.
Yep.
That's the number at year 25.
Oh, okay.
It's 30 something to start, 30.
Correct, but, but we, we bonded for the full $61,000.
Yeah. Okay. So we have to determine whether that bond would be payable to the town or whether we would have it payable to main DEP. So that's one thing to discuss.
Yeah, whichever you prefer. We're happy to.
Follow best management practices per Maine DEP manual during construction phase of the project. Screening buffers shall include multiple varieties of native evergreen species such as American Haber Vitae and Firs. That gonna be an issue for you?
Yeah, I think, I think what we put is the screening needs to be evergreens that are native.
Right.
We didn't, we didn't want to nail them down to specific species in case the availability is not there. We just want the natives.
So we just said such as. I mean, that's the language that.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Then, then yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Prior to operation, the applicant, oh, this is, I think, from the ordinance to prior to operation, the applicant shall provide certification from an independent electrical inspector that electrical connections have been expected, have been inspected and approved. I think CEP is gonna require that in any event, so I don't.
To be honest, we do independent engineering reviews of all of our projects at the time of either substantial completion or mechanical completion regardless. So. Either substantial completion or mechanical completion regardless, so. That's kind of a requirement with our financiers even to verify everything's.
Is that something CMP does for you?
No, no, that's something that we do and, and outsource higher.
Oh, okay, so it's like a third party.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Construction and operation, oh wait a minute, pesticide use on the site? To control invasive species shall be limited to USDA approved? Organic remedies. Native vegetation species domain shall be utilized. Construction and operation of development shall conform to application? Submitted plans and filed addendum? As well as applicable provisions? Of our comprehensive development ordinance, so it's? Just? Generally, you have to conform with the ordinance. Uh, during construction phase of the project, appropriate traffic warning signs? Shall be placed on the Fish Hatchery Road? In consultation with the Monmouth Police Department. Uh, any damaged or inoperable solar arrays shall be removed from the site? And disposed of appropriately. Any new owner shall notify the town within thirty days of transfer? And also certify that the pro? Project is in compliance? With approvals from the state and town. Then we have some standard? Conditions and, and one of these is, as we said, the um? I think it might be the limit? Or that may be in the ordinance, the? I guess this one doesn't say the year. Some of these are for subdivision of site plan, so some don't apply, but I don't think you'll see anything here that's? Problematic. So, let's talk about the conditions. Anyone? Have other conditions they feel? Could be applied to? This project? Or any changes to wording?
I guess the only? Concern that I have is on the buffering. The uh, Monmouth CEO? Is gonna be made aware of who's responsible? To rectify any problems?
Yeah, I think I, I might have missed this line that I, I said the buffers shall be maintained in diseased and damaged trees? Shall be replaced? I suppose we could add? Disease, damaged and dead trees shall be replaced? Shall be timely replaced.
You can say it wherever you want, I just want to be able to hear it. It's not comfortable to hold us there.
Can you hear us? Are the people listening able to hear us? Can hear them? Can't get any kind of response out of anybody. Buffer shall be maintained? And? Dead, diseased, damaged trees? Shall be timely replaced. I mean, obviously you can't do that? This time of year? And I don't know what your experience has been, but? We ran into with the? Project on the Ridge Road? In Monmouth that? Had sort of a? Period this spring where there was very little rain and what they planted, some of their? Trees died. And so, you know, there's concern? That they? Replace so? Think they're? They've been doing that, so? Does that satisfy you, Ray? I mean? I mean, obviously, yeah, it's an enforcement issue and it's? It's a, it's a visible site, so? People are gonna see if there's a problem and?
I thought when we had done the site visit, that there was an area that was kind of? Adjacent to his uh, South Monmouth Road was? That they were going to put some trees in there? To, to kind of block the view so that when you came down the road, you didn't? Yeah, because the panels are not, we had a discussion about how the height of the panels. And it? I believe at that time you said you'd plant some relatively short, no? Thirty-foot evergreens.
Yeah, Steve, where I was going with that is? They have to have a person, a contact person? Monmouth? Current CEO in Monmouth can? Knows where to go, say, hey? Got a whole bunch of? Buffering here, it's her.
For sure, so right, right on the? The gate, there's gonna be a contact information sign as well, so.
It'll be on the building permit as well. Okay, it's part of the building permit process.
And so you're, you know, you've, you submitted a um, revised plan showing the buffers. We're not telling you where to, the, your plan will be the? I think, I don't know if we? Well, we'll, we'll get to that. Good time. Any other um? Do we have a, a motion to approve this with these conditions? Second, second, any further discussion on this? All in favor? So I don't know, um? Typically, we have a plan to sign? And I don't know whether you have one with you, you want us to look at to sign or whether, or you can get us one? That we will? Is that the revised one?
Yeah, I believe so. Um, this was from the last hearing.
Is there a signature line on it for the? Planning board?
I can put one.
It may, you know, it may be better if you wanna? Just get it to us and?
Yeah, because this is it. Normally, we don't have signature lines on them anyway.
Yeah.
So I don't even think we have a stamp for that.
Okay.
So.
You could just sign it.
Yeah.
Better on it? Yeah, people would.
We need to have a signed plan, I think, in our records. And? Look for that, see howable? So what, what will happen is, is there will be a written decision? With these conditions? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Your finest.
Have you, your people? Into determining what the hard is? Evergreen contractors are in this? Area?
Um, there we've got two kinds listed that are supposed to be? What we were told for investing in this area with the soil space? And the location we're at? So I believe they were white iron and it says right on there, so.
That's what I wanted to know, somebody? That this is what you should be thinking about.
Just changing this, I, you know, that it says a project is located in rural farm residential. Right, farm residential zone, maybe they have, yeah, they say rural district. I'll initial that. One, one is for you and we keep one, is that?
Thank you so much for your time and work on this project, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The decision?
Alright, thank you very much. Yeah, the fact that we now have a signature bid just helped, well, even for our? Yeah, so again, thank you.
Um, I'll just pass it around for? Our internal records? I've got notes that I put on the? Changes we made? We get the decision out as soon as we can. You want to take the clean date?
And I'll, I'll add, put it in the folder, although everything in the folder is only from the first submission? So I don't have any of the updates.
Yeah, I guess I'll have to get your copy.
I have copies of all that.
I gotta get in and talk too. Thank you much.
For the next one?
Yep. Alright. So, taking care of our old business, new business? Is a reapplication discussion? For multifamily housing development for Brian Wood? Property at one seventy-four Academy Road, I think it's MAP? Thirty-four lot ten? Was Brian here?
Yes, it's him. Guys?
Oh, you have our, our attention. Tell us what you're thinking.
Uh, want me to go beer or?
Well, wherever, whatever. As you're comfortable.
Official, right? Alright, so I uh, I actually purchased Cameron McKee's house.
Okay.
Living town.
Alright.
Um, and uh, this property came up for sale, so we're kind of kicking some things around.
Yeah.
Um? We noticed that there was a pre-approved site years ago.
Yeah.
Twenty-four individual lots. Uh, we're not looking to do single-family housing like that, but more be, maybe more of? Uh, three or four family units, uh? You know, uh, nicer condo kind of style stuff, um?
Duplex type thing?
Right, right, nice, you know, for families to come in, uh, expand the population in the area a little bit. It's a, it's in a great location, we feel. In, in accordance with schools, the great schools that are here, um? In a short time, I've been a resident here, I've noticed that the community is, is just fantastic. You guys do a great job of just? Putting on so many events, not only at the beach, but in the main street and, and so many things, uh? And I'd like to try to kind of expand that community, if you will, and uh? Some great folks, um? There's a few things kicking around, you know, we, we're not settled on? Certain plans just yet, um, but just kind of? Feeling it out to see what may be appropriate for that site. Uh, I know back when it was approved? The new part wasn't developed yet, so? You know, we don't know what, what might be.
How large, how large is the parcel?
It's uh, well, five and a half acres or whatever.
Yeah.
Five point six.
Yeah, it says five point seven-two on the, so this? This came up and, well, we got a, a decision? It was for a subdivision.
That's right, yeah.
September fifteenth, two thousand eight? And it was five point seven-two acres is what I think the plan showed. And I think he was thinking more? Of small houses, but?
We have the current plans here, I mean, they proposed eighteen hundred and sixty square foot homes, twenty-four individual ones.
Yeah, how, how large was?
Eighteen sixty.
Okay.
Per unit.
Squid footage?
Looked at it tonight, you know? Yeah, I thought that's tall. And I mean, if you, I mean, if you guys believe with the prints, if you just want to take a quick look, but they are literally stacked on top of one another.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we're kind of, just kind of? Putting the wet development and, and you know, a smaller. Yeah, but, I mean, that was kind of tight, you know?
Yeah.
Don't jump in, I'm Scott Coria, it's something I want to do with, with Brian.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I run a complete excavation down the road here in Leeds. Um, but we're thinking more maybe like four, eight units? And obviously with the price of infrastructure and trying to get supplies? Water pipes, everything else, the way they got this proposed? It's basically you're running two sewer lines, one all the way to the back with a pump station pushing all the way forward. So without doing a lot of legwork, that's why we're here to get your approval? But maybe keep the units more towards the front of the property, eliminate maybe the pump stations? A lot of the water infrastructure? And then maybe the parking lots would be more towards in between or in the back of the buildings? So be nice.
Use some of the unused area they got created for construction, it's like an open space.
That'll be open space or detection ponds for watershed, you know?
I noticed that was kind of part of the? Recommendations or plans that he was supposed to put some money towards the uh? In a best of watershed and to stop the, a lot of the impact or something, we were like? Let's try to impact the property less, you know, and not do all that.
Yeah, this, so this project may? Probably was in the Annabethicup watershed.
Yep.
Rather than Cocknoawag, and it's just the way the water flows.
That's right.
And? And so what happened is I remember, I was on the board then, the? So we have guidelines for phosphorus export.
That's right.
With the number, with the amount of impervious? Building? Driveway? Roadway? He could not meet? The impervious standards.
That's right.
And so he? We, there was a, a way by paying a fee?
Yeah.
That goes to the watershed? Through DEP? That he could? Have a development like this? But it was, he, he was thinking of mobile homes mostly, or manufactured houses.
Manufactured.
Manufactured houses.
Yeah.
So if you were? You know, seriously contemplating something, you know, you may want to come up with a design? And? Talk to the people at Cobussy Watershed? District because? They do the phosphorus reviews for Monmouth. So they may be able to? Guide you a little bit. Things may be different. You know, this was?
This plan, plan since two thousand ten.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
So maybe there were, yeah, this might have been the first one. This, this was called phase one, so there might have been a second.
Right.
Those, those were only six hundred and twenty-four square foot houses.
Yeah.
Oh boy. Beyond that, we have.
Here, so they did six hundred and twenty-four.
That's right.
Six hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Was it one, one main building, two maybe, I'm thinking?
I, I think he might have proposed to have a?
That was phase two, that was just gonna be put on later on, but he never met the phosphorus control.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. He was supposed to, he put in like twenty-five thousand dollars for extra projects within the? Watershed area that they can do to other boats' properties to help him get to that.
Is this onsite to disposal or are you tying in to?
Tying in, we'd like to tie it to the, you know, the, like, ship in and, yeah, yeah. And it just got newly uh, going to the? Monmouth Sewer District. So they were kind of filling me in about all this information, so I was like, oh, that's great, it's good to know. Um, you know, we, we definitely need more? I want to say like? Uh, owners to, you know, kind of chip into the system to keep it, keep the cost down as costs rise as we know.
Is it onsite water supply or?
Yep, yep, it'd be public water as well. Water supply, yes, public water, it's, yeah.
So you're thinking that this is sort of like condominium?
Public water also.
That you'll, that they'll be? You know, own units, but not the land, or how do you, are you, you got to do that?
We had, you know, we had a couple, like I said, again, a couple ideas, a couple designs, um, you know, we've seen some of the, like this. Box style rectangle, you know, eight units kind of available, it's not, I don't think it's, if you go around and. I kind of want to bring it out here, it's like you're saying, kind of the duplex, kind of like a more condo style. Where they can rent and maybe later own, uh, style of housing instead of more apartment building. You know what I mean? Cause you know. Out here is not really apartment building style, you know? So.
They do a lot of that down in Florida where, I mean, they're mostly all. Montagers slash mobiles, whatever you want to call it, but they're, you know, they're spread out like cookie cutters around there and.
We're looking at the fact of cost factors that, you know, can you, if, if this plan, you were doing twenty-four water serves, twenty-four shut offs, twenty-four heaters, twenty-four furnaces. Right, you know, I mean, you're, you're, you're multiplying like twenty-four and everything.
Down there, they typically don't own the land.
Right, that's right.
They rent the land, if you will.
Right.
You know, I've talked to some people down there and they don't, most of those areas, they don't have a rent to own thing, it's like. You rent them, so you bought your unit and take ten years worth of rent and you sold it to him and he picks up the rent payment and goes on from there. It's perpetuated.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah. I know, I don't think it's able to be subdivided, cause it's not such a big piece of land, so I think that's kind of. Kind of the, one of the hurdles we're dealing with is that, you know, it kind of has to be one parcel developed. You know, uh, I kind of like to. What's the development in town here on Blue Road? Um.
Kind of a. A lot of building?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like that, but like, you know, we're like, we're trying to improve upon that idea. Where maybe it's a little more spread out, uh, or, you know. But if we utilize the front of the land, the back of the land would be more of a change. We wouldn't have to fill in that wetland that they had proposed, and, you know, things like that, you know? I know you want to maximize the, the land use, but we're not, we're not looking to get bridge up and just kind of expand the population a little bit, suppose, you know?
But we haven't really changed much, um. In multifamily development in our ordinance, so it says onsite served by public sewer system. A multifamily development shall contain. No more than one dwelling unit per ten thousand square feet. Except as provided in subsection two. There, if you're on the public sewer, we can permit an increase in density. Where you have restrictions. For low-income seniors, but that may not be what you want, you may. Want the bigger units and.
I think one thing we're looking for is some insight from the town also to see what, you know, where do you guys see this place going?
Yeah.
What do you think would benefit the town? You know, we're not looking for permission, we're actually looking for more guidance than anything. Right, right.
Well, you may be aware, you know, there was a state study that there's a real shortage of affordable housing. You know, and. We also hear from the sewer district that they're concerned. That. The system really needs more youth.
Right.
So a project like this kind of helps that system.
Yep, yep.
You know, so it, you're adding some users. Um. No, it's, you know, you, you, you trip into subdivision. When, when you have multiple units.
Right.
You know, whether they're condominiums. Or rental units, I mean, it's.
Based on the same lines.
Yeah, um.
Just the amount of square footage.
The amount, you know, it, it's kind of. Figuring out, you know, it's easier for us when we kind of see a plan.
Yeah.
Where you show, this is, this is where we proposed the road to come in. And. Um. You know, we're gonna, we, we see ourselves building three duplex units of this kind of design. And this land is open space.
Yeah.
Um. A, a. Couple things come into play, you know, like. Road access coming in, um. And, you know, since you're changing, you know, you. Sounds like you're really changing the concept significantly than what the old owner had.
Yeah, so probably, I mean, visually just looking at the prints and possibly keeping as much infrastructure, how he added the roadway. You know, one-sided walkway, kind of similar to that, but instead of doing twenty-four, maybe just do each unit, close the road, each unit. And then either park it in between, or depending how it lays out, um. Actually, I've been signing a contract yet on that. No, no, and that's kind of, so this is with the pre-app, you know, kind of thing, gears, it's kind of. We bite the bullet.
Do anything.
Yeah. Is it something that the town wants to be?
Yeah.
We, we got an offer on the land.
Yeah.
Yeah. But nothing's been signed.
Yeah.
And like I said, this is more of a courtesy than a sale, you know, is this something you guys are really interested in doing and then we jump in with both feet and, and. Start, you know, then take the prints, cause now the hard part is done, they get all the grades, all the topos are on it, everything's done. So it wouldn't take much for an engineer to pop this, pop that and whatnot, then we would revisit the permanent and get the right steps.
In other areas of the country too, they've done vertical clusters.
Okay.
So you come in and maybe have a cul-de-sac here with, you know, three or four round and another cul-de-sac over here. So it didn't, it didn't look like you just came in and went. Like in the fifties, you build three different configurations, this, this, mirror image, mirror image.
Yeah, that's, we're not, we don't have enough land to deal with that, but, yeah.
Something easy to plow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely a shortage, I have some rental properties and definitely a shortage of rentals, I get calls all the time and just don't have anything available.
Yeah, talking to even, uh, Buffy, uh, the integrity guilty in the town, she was, you know, it's definitely, it's even a shortage of. I, uh, single-family ranches in the town, just maybe that kind of style home where like maybe there's no basement or second floor.
Right.
You know, always, there's so many options and like you said.
There's been other conversations in, in the past that. Mom, this is in pretty good spot because it's not really a very long commute to Augusta or to Lewiston, Auburn. You're over in, it's a straight shot either way, I don't see that too.
It's part of my complete, I have offices in both Lewiston and Augusta, so I'm like, which way am I going to go first this morning?
I don't think you'd have any trouble renting them, but no matter what, what you do, whether you're low-income elderly or, or just anybody.
Right, yeah, just picking a demographic that the town needs and basically just.
This board already approved twenty-four units on that lot, so that should give you some sort of idea.
I get it.
The board is going to look very good at whatever.
Yeah. You know, we'll go to the next step and get them a plan so they can look at it.
Bring it into the office, we'll take a look and then get it, get it to them.
See if we can find tunes.
Yeah. The problem is when you try to add more to what had already, but you know, that, that, that site has restraints.
We're technically trying to add less, but that's right, we're trying to, trying to shrink that down, just instead of doing this way, it's a little bit this way.
Less all the way down. Units too, probably, right?
That's right. Um, no, I think we'd end up with a few more, actually, if we do four eights, it's thirty-two, twenty-four.
Good.
But it's in a smaller, but area. And of course, if we're bamboozled, he's saying there were only six of them, so he's opened this plan like three or four times. Uh huh. So I'm doing the math saying that eighteen hundred and sixty feet times forty-five thousand square feet, you would do an eight unit, we're only eighty, eighty-eight hundred per building. Right. Not, you know, with, the impact area is only thirty-five thousand square feet, right? I think the same guy that proposed it, did the plans for the school? For that whole area that they just developed there?
He did survey, that's what it was, okay, yeah.
Yeah, was it Paul Root?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but Mike Willett was kind of.
Well.
He was on the land.
Exactly, that was actually.
Part of the land that got sold to them.
I was actually going to build some of the buildings, but it just got, got caught too, you know, cost too much back, back then.
Yeah, he ended up going with manufactured housing or mobile homes.
He didn't end up doing it.
Bought apart.
Yeah. He bought apart.
People.
Yeah. He's seen that their name, he doesn't, he doesn't want to go through it anymore.
Yeah. Yeah.
But now that I live in town, Scott lives down the road, I think maybe it'd be a good idea to pick up and make more order anyways.
Yeah. Just got to get it in.
I bet.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was. I mean, one of the. You know, Monmouth is in the process of. Rewriting its comprehensive plan, but the. You know, that area, this area is sort of the area that makes most sense for development, you got water, you got sewer. Yeah.
I said, I mean.
You got the post office.
Families that can.
Yeah, the pool.
You know, have the kids can just move. I don't think like that. You know, yeah, I was crazy, I like doing my shit right, but it's just, yeah, that the opportunities are there and, uh, we want to try to take advantage of it. Yeah. So it seems, seems doable. Sounds like, yeah, that's it, yeah, as long as we can do something with it, right? Well, I think, you all know, I mean, you, you start jumping in the plan, you're going to put twenty-five, fifty grand. Right, just having a design to say, yes, I know.
See, that's why I.
Big investment to, to jump without even a little bit of, uh, green light, you know, you may want to.
Like suggested, you may want to kind of do a concept plan.
Right.
Paul Cobussy Watershed over in Winthrop, Bill, Bill Montegos, the director there and, and. You know, they like to see people do it.
Right.
Too.
Yeah.
Or land use companies can, can guide you in a, you know, you know, what you, you know, he knows what the ordinance is and stuff, he can guide you in what, what you can and can't do pretty much.
And the other thing we'd like to bring is at least all the bottom units be all handicap accessible.
Yeah. That's wise, yeah.
Heard it out.
Right. Awesome, great. Right, I like it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you again.
Nice to meet you.
Dave, right?
Yeah. You look good. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm only good at working for another couple of weeks, but I'm always by phone. Okay. Andy can reach me, Andy can reach me, the new guy.
Okay.
So, cause he knew the new, the new guy coming in, who just started yesterday.
Oh, he's.
Andy, Andy, Oklahoma.
Okay.
But he'll, he'll call me.
Okay.
And I'll come in. I'll come in.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
He hasn't done anything with the planning board yet, so we need, he needs some help.
Need some breaking down.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right, I appreciate it.
You go down the right path.
Yeah, no, so, so the last handy guy I hired here is a deer in the headlights look. Uh, what do you think? No, no, without playing, it was good. Thanks, guys, I'll be here.
Bye.
Uh, what do you want them back?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got both of them?
Yeah.
All right, um. Other business application fees, I haven't done much on that yet, I'm going to try to. Kind of look, I mean. I think our fees are probably too low. Especially the things like solar projects. So. Maybe we can discuss that. At an upcoming meeting. Um, anything for, e-else for us, Dave, you hear anything else going on?
Yeah, I got this, uh, yesterday, um, this is Phil's, uh, canopy, uh, Sitco owns the equipment at Phil's. And they just replaced all the pumps, uh, because the pumps were ancient, weren't working, so when they were there working on the pumps, they noticed that the. Canopy did not meet their current requirements for Sitco, so they sent an updated plan, they're changing the canopy to the new logo. Uh, from what it was to, to what it is, it's not any bigger, it's not any smaller, it's not lit, um, but they needed. They wanted to get some sort of approval, I said, well, the planning board approved it the first time. The planning board really has to review any changes to it as per the, the code, so, um. I, I looked at it close, um, I can't, I haven't met with them, uh. It's just changing, but what's now is just Sitco and it doesn't have the triangle. It doesn't have the red banner, it just says Sitco on it on a white background. Uh, so that's, that's what they're looking for to do. Um, the other thing is I'm still getting phone calls on that Blaisdell Hill where the storage units are. And the house behind it, they want to split it and make it two separate lots. And you know, it came, it came to the planning board, is that a, is that a planning board amendment?
I think it is, if they're changing the lot, they got it.
Wasn't, wasn't that quite a bit to get that approved way back when, cause, right, if I remember correctly?
Yeah.
Well, he had to live in the house behind it and it was, and now he's, you know, he's moving to Florida, so he's getting out of it and. Dad died, so they sold off that house.
There was. There was some odd things.
Side was a real problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
On Blaisdell Hill Road?
Oh, John Caposa.
John Caposa.
Yeah.
He came in a few times.
I'm, I'm just going to tell them, I, I want to try to take care of it before Andy.
Yeah.
Takes over, so I'm going to call him and tell him, look, submit a plan. To the planning board and come to a meeting and make your proposal.
But going back to that one, Dave. Is that much different than what's there?
It's not that much different, it's just a different logo.
Well, I don't think we need, I think you can approve that.
Okay.
I, but it's physically the same.
Physically the same size, yeah.
And it's not being lit.
And it's not lit.
Not internally lit or anything.
Probably the only thing this is going to do too, we don't have, uh, up-to-date fire suppression in it.
I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I think they're just changing the panels.
Oh, they're just changing the.
I think they're just changing the panel, they, the fire suppression system is checked every three years, it, it has a new tag on it.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, you know, I, I gotta believe that it's done.
Yeah.
Uh, they wouldn't put the new pumps in if there was something in violation, you know, so. I'll, I'll.
Do we need a motion on it?
I, just for courage of the. I can do it.
Yeah.
Just so you know that I, I did bring it to you.
Okay.
Hey, somebody, somebody calls me.
Yeah.
That's all I have, uh, Andy started yesterday, McMullen, he's the new co-董事, he's got ten hours a week.
That's all, that's what you're gonna have?
An hour a week.
Mondays, you'll be in on Mondays?
Mondays from. From ten to two and Wednesdays by appointment. It's not much.
Yeah, not enough, that's for sure.
Not enough, um, he, he is a real estate agent. Um, he was, uh, in Waterville Police Department, he was an A C O for Waterville too. His wife is an attorney. From, or Maine. The state of Maine, something, um. And he just needs something to take up some time, he's a farmer. He's got a farm, he milks cows, he's got other things, so he, in the morning, he's busy, cause he has to get the animals squared away, cause his wife goes to the work. Um, so he's, he's got to try to fit this into his schedule, he just thought it would be interesting and he seems to like it, I mean, I've worked with him for two weeks, but. Now he can sign, so I can go back to Mike.
When are you officially done?
When you come. Wait, uh, um, uh, he is signing everything from now on.
Oh, yes, yeah.
He got certified, he, um, that's one in yesterday.
Yeah.
So he has not taken any tests yet, he. Will become certified within the first year by law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, his pay goes up once he gets certified like anybody else would.
Yeah.
I think he'll, I think he'll do fine, he.
Where's he out of?
Fairfield. Oh.
Okay.
Half an hour from here. Yes, wherever Justin, same town Justin lives in.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they didn't know each other. So he should be fine, I, I'm, I am contracted to work until the end of the month, five hours a week. Um, so then I'll do that and then I'll, I'll be on call for, he's already, I left him alone for two hours here, he called me three times. What are you gonna do? He doesn't know, you know, you don't know. He is computer literate, which is good, he can do a lot of things that I did analog, he's going to try to do computerized, which would make his time go faster, you know, easier. But he doesn't have to respect, except for all the show land, all the planning board, all that stuff, still, he still has to do. I don't know. I don't know, I just don't think ten hours, no.
The, um. Yeah, I, I asked. Our town manager this week, I said, well, will we have a, a scribe tonight?
No.
No, the person gave notice and I don't think we ever had her. So they've apparently got an ad out, but I said, well, how, I said, it's very hard to take minutes. I said, it's very hard to take minutes. At a meeting when you're participating. So Larry's not here, I was gonna try to. Get him to pick up on taking the minutes, or, I mean, that's. Justin said, well, they can go online. I mean, they can listen to the tape and. Write the minutes, but I, I mean, I've written the last, I don't wanna write minutes, I don't wanna do it. So I don't know if anyone.
Aren't we, aren't we legally supposed to have? Actual minutes, not just the video?
Well, yes, we have to have written minutes.
Yeah.
And we have, you know, we're all up to date, other than getting this last month approved.
Except the town. Who has the storage of the minutes. Hasn't had minutes in two years.
They don't have any copies in them.
The book is exactly the same as the day I left. Not one pair minute, one set of minutes have been added to this book, and that is the legal book. If you have to go to court, that's what they want. I don't know.
And I don't know whether we can reconstruct them easily, we can. Because when there were changes made, we noted the changes, but of course, what's supposed to happen is the secretary. Supposed to make those changes and then their final minutes.
Correct.
So. I ain't gonna do it.
There's a person that records the minutes so they get paid?
Oh, yeah. Well, yes, if they get somebody, but you know, the. Town manager's position seems to be, well, you've got a, you have an, you have a secretary. Member of the planning board and the secretary member should be doing this. And should be getting everything ready for the meetings. And I don't know, I mean, sometimes you get. A board member who's willing to do that, but. We've never had to do it before and that's the problem now.
Justin's been around long enough that he should know better.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen when we have meetings for the comp plan again? That's where I'm worried.
Yeah, well. And I've let that. I mean, I've got a guy kind of on, company kind of on hold. But I don't have the time to do the comp plan in this review of the solar ordinance that's going on, so I figured, once we get the solar done. We can start up the comp plan again, I mean, his. His idea, the town manager's idea. Was that this person had planning experience from Brunswick or somewhere. But that fell through, I mean, the way it had been left before. We had these people ready, you know, they they said we couldn't do it right away, but we'll be able to do it this winter. And. You know, the last I heard. They were gonna work out the money issue and that never got done. So. I don't know.
That was two budgets ago.
If you said as someone, you're participating in the meeting, it's pretty hard to be taken.
Right. And you know, but he he sort of said, well, you, someone can go and listen to the. Tape and.
That girl who had all this experience, from what I was told, uh, listened to fifteen minutes of a selectman's meeting and shut it off and. Said I quit. Because nobody, nobody in the room. When they, when they, so she had no idea who's talking to who.
Alright.
You know, she's listening, she's not seeing anything, she's just listening.
And the same thing's gonna happen. Well, we had. There there's gonna be voices unidentified.
Yeah.
I mean, someone who knows us will maybe be able to figure it out.
Make it worth it.
Didn't like the Marines all the time, but she was here.
Right, it gave us something to work off. It's it's a problem, I mean. You know, it's, I don't know. Have to figure it out.
Have to figure it out.
I will not be here for the April meeting. I didn't wanna help. Get ready for it, but I won't, I'm out of town that night, I'm out of state.
What's the date on that?
I think it might be. Is it April twelfth?
Oh, really?
Is it April, you've got a calendar, Dave? Second. I think it's the twelfth.
I think it's the eighth.
Oh, is it the eighth, it's April one?
April first, the, I don't know, first day.
How about the thirty third?
Oh, no, that's not right. It'll be, it'll be the thirteenth. Yeah, thirteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't be here, I don't know what we'll have, but.
Well, what about that other one, that on one thirty five, isn't that coming back?
Well, I don't think that, I think it's gonna take them a while.
Okay. I just gave him a permit for.
The other house, the new house or the one they?
For the, for her house and for the renovations on this one.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
They're spending money.
Oh, boy, are they in trouble.
Why?
Because nothing in it is to code. There's, there's twenty junction boxes that they're ready to bury in the wall.
Can't do that.
You see PVC in a residential structure.
Oh, geez. Not packs.
So they did some packs.
That's he PVC should be outlawed.
PVC's only legal for a commercial building.
What about modular homes, can they use them in those anymore?
Not in modular homes now either, I think that just got changed. But it was in modular.
Right.
Uh, it's a mess, it's a mess.
They're doing, seem to be doing a good job, I mean, it's nice to bring that old building back, you know, it'll look, it'll look good when it's done, hopefully.
I'm going in tomorrow. As as CEO, I'm going in tomorrow. Look.
Look. Yeah.
I'm bringing Andy with me on Monday.
Any electrician's gotta, you know, he, any licensed electrician should know. Cause they're allowed to do their own work in their own house, yeah. But is it gonna be a residential house, is that what it's gonna be? Yeah.
From Matt, from Connecticut.
Yeah.
We think they'd wanna do it, right?
Where's the new house going, right beside it?
All the way down at the end. So all the way down Birchwood.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But I've been getting phone calls from everybody on Birchwood, when is the planning board, when's it going to the planning?
But that individual house doesn't have to, does it?
As long as I got access.
Have access.
I'm not.
Is there a sep- separate piece of land that the house is going on?
No, but it's. It's down at the end, it's. The nicest lot, nicest place on that, on that little hole, right, right at the end.
It's only two struck, it's two, so if they do anything else, then they.
And they have to come to you.
Right.
Or they have to wait five years to do another one. Right?
Yeah. Yep. Well, well, the next code enforcement person, I just don't know what the hell's going on anyway.
Cuz nobody's there to keep the continuity.
They do that after the, after the the next revale. Then you get a ten year span for that.
Uh, oh, man. You put on a good front to all the other communities, though, let me tell you, everybody thinks mama is so good, you've got every, all their shit in the road.
I appreciate you doing what you, what you've been doing.
I don't know. Allowed, CEO is allowed to do minor site review, right, and I had a drawer in the file cabinet, and it was. Three quarters full of minor site plans, but one drawer under all the violations, you know, so you had a whole drawer of violations. And you keep, and I I mark it on the card, so if you see the dot on the outside of the manila thing, there's a violation. You should go and look at it before you write a permit, right, I I did that. The same thing with the minor site plans, it was a blue dot, you know, on on it, so you go look at it. They took all the files out of the cabinet and put it in a box.
Oh, geez.
So they weren't even in there. So. How was it, how's the next guy gonna come and? Do his due diligence, he, cuz he doesn't know, this guy, if I wasn't there, he wouldn't know to look there.
Right.
So I'm having to put them all back in.
Well, that's a good exercise, right?
You got, you have to have some continuity and and with three other guys. I I tell you, I wrote more certificate of occupancies in the last two weeks. For permits that I issued before I left.
Right.
So that's two years ago.
So when I, when I send in a request for occupancy, do I just dress it to the CEO?
Okay.
Mr. CEO.
Oh, my god. I don't know, it's the whole thing's falling apart, I don't know how he's gonna do it. He's not, that's the problem, something's gonna slip, and he won't be able to do planning board, he won't be able to do board of appeals unless it's a, an appeal against his decision. You know, that, you know, then he would get it, but. I haven't gotten anything from them. Since the first. The first packet.
Would he be willing to work more hours?
He would work more hours.
If we lobbied, who's making this decision that it's ten hours?
Can we talk to the selectman about it and?
I think we should, I mean, I have, I have sent letters. I've talked to Doug, I've talked to my brother. Said it's not enough.
I mean, look how busy you were, you know what I mean, and.
I was doing inspection. So, but nobody asked me what of my thirty two hours I spent doing inspections, you know, if they done it, I would have kept record of it. But it's not. It's ten hours a week of doing inspections. It's only four or five, I did it on the way in or on the way home, I had the Jeep, it was easy, you just go and do it. He doesn't have it.
There'll be more violations with less, less hours because there's no way you can keep track of everything.
But unless he comes in on a weekend, unless he comes in on a weekend, he's not gonna catch him.
Right. I was talking to the. Old guy in Winthrop the other day. He says to me, oh, are you inspecting this up on this road, I go, nope. He says. Uh. You know, if, I know, I said, I don't know, I said, I can call him, but I said, did you issue a building permit, he goes, oh, shit. Goes in, he goes like, oh. No.
Write it, and I wouldn't write it, I would.
So, so then you gotta, and and I, uh, like you, I'm, I drive all over the place and that, oh. Uh, there's a brand new garage there. They they just enclosed the debt. And these people, it is like the, it it's like. Best guy there in Litchfield.
Yeah.
It's the Wild West.
I I talked to Brandy Pierce, you know, Brandy. She, she wanted to do some work on her camp, so she asked me if she needed a permit and. And she, she goes, oh, it's you, what are you doing there? And I said, oh, I'm just filling in. She said, oh, so do I call you now and tell you all the violations I have? No, no, I said, no, wait. I'm not here to write violations, wait, wait a month and then call Andy and tell him what, cuz she knows them all. She knows.
Those who don't know Brandy, she was on the planning board for a couple of years, she worked.
She's in charge of eight engineers now, she's in charge of that department.
Like I said.
E P, E P, water quality, uh, something like that, I don't know.
Like I said to Mark though, I said. So what's gonna happen to the town when somebody over on uh, Royal Drive there, like what happened? Two years ago, they had a whole bunch of people out on the deck. And the whole friggin' deck collapsed, off the house, whole bunch of people hurt and everything like that. So the first thing, your insurance company is gonna go like, oh, wow, let me see the permit, let me see the permit. Then you go to the code guy and say, why didn't you catch that?
Right. That's why, that's why Mark wants us to do it, so he can say, well, it was him, or me that inspected it, here's the letter. Our insurance have to pay the price.
I don't know how things got to where they are now.
Easier when I could just go there and inspect it.
Things were pretty good, I think, back then, you know, back.
Oh, well. Well, I'm getting tired of this, the planning boards, I have to say, I mean, I like doing the work, but.
How many years you been doing it?
Too many. Well, I bet I've been on the planning board for over thirty years.
Is it, it was, it was, uh, Mike was the oldest on the board, wasn't it?
Mike, I think was on when I got on, or above, maybe.
Yeah, cuz he was a teenager. Mike was a teenager, when he got on that board.
Um, isn't it, isn't it pretty? Normal to have a attorney on most boards, most planning boards?
Well, if you're lucky enough, yeah, so what happened is it was a guy lived up on town, uh, Peace Hill Road, Jeff Smith was an attorney. Who I knew. And he said, I've been on the planning board, I'm getting done. You know, would you be interested, you know, and so I I got on it.
He had two for a while, then we have on Beatro, what's his name?
They have the town solicitor.
It might have been another, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 Joe.
Joe.
Yeah, Joe Saunders. Yeah, we had two and.
Up has a uh attorney on there.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it helps because.
Helps.
You know, it. And you know.
That mistake.
Yeah, so when I got on, Tom Fairchild, who had been the the superintendent. Of schools was the chair, he was, he was good because. It was helpful for me cuz he knew how to run a meeting, you know, because he was used to the, the school board. And, uh, the librarian. Who began with D. Oh, geez, they lived up, they lived up the road here. Big white house. Holly was on the board, you know, there was.
Before she went to the select board.
Yeah, so there was, you know, we had a good. Not that we don't have a good now, but. But I don't know, you know, it's, I'm tired of the, you know, now that. Once Dave left, the number of calls I got and emails has increased.
Right, true.
And. I'm doing more work than I wanna be doing at my office.
Yeah.
And then I get this and it's just. And then you have the, you have the comp plan, you have the solar, it's just too much stuff, and I have some other boards up on, you know, it's just. Just can't continue to do what I'm doing. And like I say, I never, you know, now we have no one writing minutes. Or agendas, you know, the agendas.
Or even getting that stupid thing to work.
Yeah, so motion to adjourn at.
Recording, by the way.
Eight twenty nine, we're good, I hope they go listen to it.
We're getting no support from the town.